Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, November 2nd, 2022. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Here. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is going to be public comment. I would like to remind all speakers of the rules the council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before a city council. Profanity will not be permitted. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Good morning. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. First, do no harm is not just a rule of medicine. Government shall not harm the people or can be held accountable. Block busting and infliction of emotional distress has occurred against Bon Air. Those who oppose the property owners of Bon Air do so at their own peril. Various cities and hospitals are being sued with success. The coercion of an experimental drug or loss of a job is wrong. It makes me wonder if municipalities are receiving funding for participating in a drug trial. Hospitals get 20% more for that. Let's hope this determinatory practice does not result in huge legal costs to the city of Pittsburgh. The Pennsylvania State Constitution says that government was created for the peace, safety, and happiness of we the people. Decisions and actions that harm the people are not acceptable. There are elected and appointed officials that have proven themselves to be enemies of Bon Air. Mayor Ganey, Councilman Coghill, and state representative Dana have all pledged to help Bon Air get rid of our detrimental school property and replace it with the green spaces. The memorial green space will be beneficial to all ages and stages of people. A beautiful, calming place to enjoy fruit trees, flowers, and birds. While the rest of the city council promotes the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air neighborhood, the school board has proven itself as detrimental. Will you be part of the solution? The green space is a partial recreation for the injuries we have endured. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Stephen Albert, whom I do not see, therefore that exhausts our list of registered speakers. If anyone with us in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward, provide your name and neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District at 915 Mercer Street, up at the top of Bedford. I come today because I wanted to talk to you because you need to understand why I come down and why I act the way I do. First thing I wanted to say that my son was killed on November the 7th, so this day is coming up. And during that, whenever that happens, I don't know, inside of me, I just get real nervous and stuff. And I am kind of mean, and I think mean things. But I wanted to say this, that God is working on my heart. Because yesterday when I went out in the hallway and they were getting ready to do their picture or whatever, there was Mrs. Gross standing with them. I happened to look back and she's looking at me and she says, well, I guess you don't want to take a picture with me. And I'm mad. I walk off. But then I thought about it and I talked to Dr. Miller. And I thought about it. Like, I looked in her face and I saw the look. It wasn't the look of hate or nothing, but it's like, well, you don't want to be bothered with me. And I thought, looking in her face, I felt different about her. I did. I felt a whole lot different. And I did this because I believe when you hear something, you forget it. If you see it, you can remember it. But when you know, you know it. And this was for Mrs. Gross. Ms. Gross, you did a good thing. It was a wake-up call from me. Thank you. And Summer Lee, you both voted for the women that are voiceless. You were a voice for the voiceless. And I can't take that away from you, even though I didn't like what happened with our community when we couldn't speak for ourselves. You did bring forth something that it needs to be known. You need to know. And I'm trying to figure out who thought of, when the woman's having a baby, you have to shackle her. I mean, you know, she's shackled. What is she going to do? Run with the baby coming out of her? And I'm thinking, and it might be me, and it might be prejudice, but I'm thinking that you white men thought of that. I don't even think a black man would say, shackle her. She can't move her legs to have a baby. That's trauma for her and trauma for the baby. But I do want to say again, Ms. Gross, I apologize. I shouldn't have took away what you did because you and Summer Lee and citizens, you vote for whoever you want to. But I say, Summer Lee is speaking for the voiceless. And I feel like sometime I'm a voice, I'm voiceless. Even though I come down here and talk, they don't pay too much attention to me. But I'm gonna keep coming because I feel that if you lose one life, you understand, one life, and that's the way I felt with my son, laying on the floor, knowing if they left him then he was gonna die. And he did. He died because that man came back and kicked my son, kicked him till blood around his spleen. But the autopsy say a natural heart attack. But when I took his autopsy to West Penn and I was helping a client, helping another citizen, and I say to the doctor, please look at my son's autopsy. They say a natural heart attack. And he said, no. See wet about blood around his spleen. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Bernadette. I got you some copies of this. Last week, B2 experienced a lot of loss. My older 30-something kids have lost half of their neighborhood friends to heroin. On my quiet street alone. I'm sorry. Oh, gosh. On my quiet street alone, next door, across the street, fathers, a 13-year-old around the corner, prom dates, newlyweds, on and on. As a mom, I am frightened. As a grandma, I am even more frightened. Last week, we lost the youngest of the kids who live behind my house as their clay was shot in the head. Halloween, none of us knew that the little girl that worked at Las Palmas was only 13. She went missing. I was talking to my oldest daughter and she said, mommy, you've been fighting for a rec center since we were little. That's 39 years. You want to see angry kids? Tell them they're second class. Tell them they have to go to Brookline for everything. I've already proven West Liberty Avenue is not a safe road to cross for these kids. It's just not. Otter Row has their own little town down there. I looked it up. Steel prefabbed buildings. If we could dish out a million dollars to plant trees that's going to crack cement and cause more trouble, they're anywhere from $39,000 to $50,000. We could do this. Pauline Park, ever since I've been bringing my kids and my foster kids down there, is nothing but a toilet-smelling condom-left-behind area. It's flat. It's the best street to bring prefab buildings up there. If you ask me, I will do whatever I can, if I have to talk to Stoughton Farms, if they're even in existence anymore. Heinz, I will do whatever. We could do this. We can immediately. These kids are angry, and they should be. They lost their pool. Okay, we're not going to get a pool anymore. They lost the greatest basketball they ever had at St. Catherine's. They told us the ceiling was low. I told the father when I tried to get it when my now youngest was six, I said, hold on, that ceiling hasn't changed in 30 years. The kids have always played there. They've lost everything. They're basically being told they're second-class citizens. Well, now you got a whole bunch of angry kids. Please, can we make this happen? I think these prefabs is a possibility. I've sat in a bunch of these meetings. I see the money that's going out. Please.
Thank you. Any other speakers with us? If not, there was one speaker on the list that I did not mention. Andre DeValley. Seeing none. That will then take us to our finance and, I mean, excuse me, our Standing Committee's agenda, of which the first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have one deferred paper, Bill 677.
Bill 677, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Office of Management and Budget, the Department of City Planning, the Department of Finance, the Department of Innovation and Performance, the Department of Public Works, the Department of Public Safety, and the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh to temporarily address the public health emergency of homelessness in the city of Pittsburgh and to provide for policies and programs to address the lack of affordable housing and their consequent contribution to chronic homelessness as directed herein until more permanent solutions can be implemented.
Motion to approve brief discussion?
Second.
Excuse me. So I just wanted to thank the administration for meeting again with Councilman Coghill's Homeless Task Force and continuing to work with us. We're kind of using the legislation as holding our own feet to the fire so that we can come to some closure and collaboration with the administration. So with that, I'll motion to hold three weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, bill will be held three weeks. New papers, Bill 868.
Bill 868, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an encroachment easement with Jason and Stephanie Small to permit certain structures to encroach city property.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Next bill is Bill 869.
Bill 869, Resolution Further Amending, Resolution Number 797 of 2017, effective December 28, 2017, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Enterprise Resource Planning by $157,705 and Increasing Information System Modernization by $157,705."
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 870.
Bill 870, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Mon Oakland Connector Four Mile Run by $400,000 and Increasing Street Resurfacing by $400,000."
If someone would please make a motion to hold one week?
Hold one week, please.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will be held one week. That takes us to our invoices. Need a motion to approve the invoices?
They're moved.
Second.
With that, I need a motion to waive the rules of council, excuse me, to approve an invoice under police that is $388 over our $5,000 limit?
Motion to waive the rules?
Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The rules have been waived. All those in favor of approving the invoices say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the intradepartmental transfers?
They're moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Transfers are approved. Need a motion to approve the P cards?
They're moved.
They're moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee, chaired by Councilman Kraus. Our first, one deferred paper, Bill 629.
Bill 629, Resolution Establishing the Pittsburgh Strong Communities Initiative and Advisory Committee.
A motion to approve very brief discussion, please.
Second.
Councilman Burgess?
Can I request, can we talk about, we're going to do a proc, I think, in a few minutes. I'm not sure how soon. Can we talk about this last? Because I want to talk about it a little bit. And I don't know when the sports teams are going to come in. Or I could talk about it now, where it was up to you.
They're here, but they're just visiting the mayor's office and coming right over.
Yeah, so can we do this last?
So we'll leave it open and come back to it last.
Yeah, hello. Hello. Councilman, what is your ultimate pleasure on the bill?
Well, I don't know. We've held it for, we've held it, no, we've held it for weeks with no comment by members. So I'd like to pass it, since there has been no written, no written comments, no collaborative changes. It has the support of the mayor's office, and I will explain why it's needed, which I've been quiet about until now. But now I'll spend a day explaining how it fits in the overall infrastructure of violence reduction and building poor communities. Certainly, wealthier communities do not need this help. If you are living in Howland Park, or if you're living in Bloomfield, or if you're living in South Point Breeze, if you're living in Shadyside, you already have internally the capacity by your individual community groups and your individual residence groups in order to participate fully with the city and all of the resources available. However, if you live in 50% of the city that's under-resourced, your community groups do not have the capacity. They cannot write grants. They cannot, they cannot, and I'll talk about this later. They cannot provide, they do not have the resources in order to partner with the city. We already learned, and we just came back from a conference, saying that in order to stop gun violence, we need everybody to participate. But we can't get participation from people who don't know how to participate. And so I'll explain that in detail. And again, I'll be willing to amend if there is any written comments or any other help on how to strengthen this. But I will, I will spend the day later explaining why it's needed, how it fits in the infrastructure, and how it all fits together.
Thanks, Councilman. So then we'll leave the bill open to the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
We will, but we're still on discussion. I know Councilwoman Gross did want to speak.
Thank you. I do feel like this is the second time that I've said this into the record, but I'm happy to say it again. And I know that we also said it off the record after a meeting when we had a lengthy discussion about the bill. So this bill changes the job descriptions of the four new city council employees that were just hired in 2022 under and under an advertised job description for community engagement. This bill reassines the positions to do technical assistance, which means it's not just writing grants, it's writing business plans in nonprofit language. That's program development. Figuring out what is capacity building at an organization is not the same as communications backgrounds and just being able to write press releases, create events, and post on social media. So it is, I think, an interesting and important conversation that the work that our communities needs, because the city organization, as a corporation, has been in such austerity mode because of Act 47, because of oversight by the Republican ICA Board, that we withdrew from communities. We closed recreation centers. We closed swimming pools. We fired more than half of city staff, including especially the community counselors, the rec center directors, the people who taught classes, who coached athletic leagues. And we have left communities to their own devices, right? And some of those communities had volunteer capacity and some did not. Some of those communities have been able to raise charitable dollars and have staff and paid staff to do the kind of community work that the city could and possibly should be doing. So that's its own conversation, right? So assuming that we don't change what we're doing and we do leave the only work that needs to be done in communities to these independent citizen community organizations, it is an important discussion about how we help them level the pin-laying field and provide the kinds of technical assistance, capacity building, and resource sharing that those, if they're going to fend for themselves and we're not going to do it with city staff and city resources, what should they do? Now, it's a completely separate question whether the bill as written should reassign the very new four employees of the city council, who I sat through all of the interviews, right? Were hired under one job description with one set of skill sets, whether that's this, I believe these are not translatable skill sets to technical assistance and capacity building. So that, I've said that before, I believe, on the record, and I've said it to the sponsor, and I maintain that that is a fundamental problem with this proposal. And that part would definitely need to be fixed before I could, before I could support the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Or you're wishing to still revisit it at the end?
I can talk about it now. It doesn't matter to me. I was just, because I know, I'm not sure when they're coming in. I can talk about it now. It doesn't matter to me. I can start now if you want me to.
Mr. Chair, if you're offering second round, I would like the second round as well, please.
Whatever, whatever the will is called. It's just that I'm willing to explain why it's important. I think that's different. That's different than whether these particular workers can do that job. That's a different conversation. But I want to talk about why this work is important and how it fits in. Does that make sense?
It does. Second round, Councilman Kraus?
Yes, please. Thank you. I've not had opportunity to speak at length with the councilmen regarding the particulars of the bill, but I do believe that Councilwoman Gross does interject an interesting perspective that I think needs to be explored a little more vigorously. And I would like that opportunity to be able to do that. So for what that's worth, it may be, it may be more productive and bring better results for the, for what you wish to accomplish, Councilman, which I believe, and I believe this whole council stands in full agreement with you, is the, perhaps the pathway by which we're trying to get there that might need a broader discussion. So I appreciate Councilwoman Gross bringing a different perspective into the conversation. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll leave this bill open as our guests begin to come in, and we'll come back to it. Let's, as they come in, we can finish up what we can. Let's go to our new paper, Bill 867. Madam Clerk?
Bill 867, Resolution Authorizing the Citizens Police Review Board to Enter Into An Agreement or Contracts with Attorney William F. Ward of Brothman Gordon, PC for Professional Services to Assist in Legal Representation of the Citizen Police Review Board for a Period of Three Years. Said Agreements or Contracts Shall Not Exceed $45,000 Per Year for 2023, 2024, and 2025, Subject to the Annual Allocation by City Council.
Motion to approve with very brief discussion, please.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman Kraus?
Thank you, Councilman. For those that may be a little newer to council, Mr. Ward has been the attorney for the Citizens Police Review Board for as many years as I have been here. This is probably now the fourth time since I've been here that we have renewed his contract to be solicitor to the Citizens Police Review Board in three-year increments. And I'm happy to support this, and I ask for the support of members as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Need, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. With that, at this point, I would like to ask someone to make a motion to waive the rules of council.
So moved.
So that we can do proclamations.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So our rules have been waived to allow us to now do a proclamation. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just invite Pittsburgh Public Schools, the superintendent. Mayor Ganey is here. I saw him come in.
He's here.
Oh, I didn't see, I didn't see you. You look like one of the kids. So I'm gonna say, invite Mayor Ganey up and everyone who's here with the Westinghouse Bulldogs, who are our city league champions, to come up for proclamation with Reverend Burgess.
So Mayor Ganey, if you would join Madam President at the front, and we're going to ask all those with the team, please come forward to the front of the, to receive your proclamation, as well as our superintendent. I didn't see you. Dr. Walters, how are you?
So everyone can come up around us and around the front, wherever you can find a space, fit in. Just stand there. We'll have the other members of council join us. So this is an exciting day for Pittsburgh, an exciting day for Westinghouse, and I want to thank Mayor Ganey for asking us to join him in presenting proclamations and recognizing your championship and your hard work. And I also want to say that Reverend Burgess represents this area, and he's going to join us, and he wants to say, he would like to say a few words, too, of congratulations. With that, I'm gonna turn it over first to Mayor Ganey. Okay, he said let Reverend Burgess go. So Reverend Burgess first. What a gentleman, huh? Both of them are.
So before reading this proclamation, I have spent all of my life in Homewood. My brother, my cousins, my uncles, my aunts, all of them are Westinghouse graduates for many, many, many years. And I go back to the days of Westinghouse football back in the 50s and 60s, when they were beating people 59 to nothing. And so I go back to those Pete days and that great, great legacy of football in Homewood and the Westinghouse. And so these young people, we are grateful for your championship, right? We're grateful for the coach, who has brought this sort of new spirit of achievement. We are grateful for the superintendent, who brings us this, both in his personage and in his demeanor and in his administration. He brings about this spirit of possibilities and potentialities. And, you know, I'm a frustrated athlete, right? I wasn't like Mayor Ganey. Mayor Ganey was a real, was a first-rate Division One athlete. I was a frustrated athlete, right? You know, my roommate was a first-run NBA pick, but I didn't have those skills. But I will tell you this, what I have learned. Sports is a great gateway. Most of us, most of you will never be NFL football players, but you can use these skills that you've learned on the football field to be great citizens, to be great students, and to be great men. And so my prayer and hope for you, as we celebrate this championship and your families and friends around you, my prayer for you and hope for you is that you remember these days. You will remember this. And the ring you get, you'll remember it for the rest of your life. When you realize that, you realize that you have this opportunity to represent our community, to be great. And so that, I pray that you'll spend the rest, the rest of your life, not just in football, but in life, I pray that you will spend the rest of your life trying to be great. Thank you for this moment.
Now, we're gonna turn it over to Mayor Ganey, and then we will introduce the superintendent and the folks that he has with him today. And we are also joined today by Gene Walker, our Pittsburgh Public School Board, one of our Pittsburgh Public School Board members. So I want to thank you, Mr. Walker, for being here as well. So first, Mayor Ganey.
First, I just want to thank Council President Teresa Kelsmith. I appreciate you. I appreciate you. I appreciate you letting the Westinghouse Bulldogs come to council today. But I just want to thank the team. I want to thank you. Because a lot of people don't know what it means. I want to thank you, because a lot of people don't know what it means when you talk about Westinghouse football, the legacy of Westinghouse football, but also not just the legacy, I know what y'all had to go through. A small city school like this, the lack of resources you may have, practicing on the field, and it just goes to show, it don't matter where you from, it's if you got the heart, the will, the desire to be the best, you gonna be the best. And y'all proved it. And what I love more than anything is last year, supposed to be y'all's year, didn't happen, and you came back this year with more willpower to go get it. And that's powerful. And I'm just so proud of y'all, not just as athletes, but just as young people that is in the community doing good things. To the principal, thank you so much. Where ya, there you go. Principal, thank you so much.
My book falls on the wall. No, please.
So I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Walters for a minute, and I want Dante to come up, because it's cool that you hear from me and all these elected officials, but I want to bring it home and let them hear, let you hear how they see about this victory. I got the principal down there, he's gonna have to make his way up as well. Let me start with Dr. Walters.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Mayor Ganey, Council President Kail Smith. We have a group of individuals here who are so proud of our scholar athletes in the Pittsburgh Public Schools. I have a motto that says, nothing in life is so complicated that it cannot be achieved by discipline and hard work. And so I thank the coach for instilling discipline and a dedication to not only winning, but doing it with class and grace and complete finesse. And so I know there's a football player on the team, his nickname is Finesse, who's a part of my African-American Centers for Advanced Studies Council, so I'm sure he's thinking I'm talking to him, but I'm talking to the entire team, because I'm really proud of them. I want to acknowledge the principal, Mr. Steven Starita. Our head coach, Coach Dante, who's really rebuilding a legacy and pride in Westinghouse, because that is one of our gems of our Pittsburgh Public Schools district, and I appreciate him for polishing that gem in such a way that they're gaining full statewide recognition, because they're worthy of that. I also have with us our head of athletics, Mrs. Arnold. As you heard before, one of our board members, Mr. Walker, is here to join us. One of our assistant superintendents, Dr. Nina Sacco, who's in charge of high schools. And lastly, our assistant superintendent of student support services that houses our athletics program, Dr. Rodney Netchi. And so again, I'm proud of our greatest assets, our children, particularly this Westinghouse High School team that I know will go on on Friday night to bring us more greatness, more pride, more joy in the Pittsburgh Public Schools. So I thank you.
Principal? I like that jacket. Where am I?
I'll get you on. Good morning, everybody. I really didn't have anything prepared to say, but what I do want to, when I think about these guys, and I'm talking to all of you guys that are in this room right now, you guys are the leaders in the building. I appreciate the hard work, the dedication that you all bring, and the pride that you bring back to the house. You know, it's, I also just, you know, pointing out that something that everybody else has pointed out, but the coaching staff, you know, Coach Dante, Coach Green, Coach Coward, Coach Hall, and all the, all the additional support that these guys have. You know, we, we're building a program at Westinghouse, and I've learned a lot, not just from these kids, but these coaches that just really support me as the principal in the building. So thank you all for continuing to be the leaders in the building, and I'm looking forward to building more with you.
And to the coach, best coach in the city, give it up for Dante.
Just like Mr. Starita, I wasn't prepared to say anything, but first and foremost, I want to thank Mayor Ganey and City Council for recognizing not only just Westinghouse, but city league football. Before, I'm a football coach at Westinghouse. I am a proud alum of the city league, and I'm a big, huge fan of everything city league. So thank you guys for, for the recognition. But today, and also want to thank administration and all school staff, because this is not a Dante show, this is not just a football staff show, this is everybody, the community, everybody who has put their hand to the plow to make sure that our guys have the richest experience possible. So I thank you guys. Thank you, Ms. Kenya, who is around her somewhere, she doesn't get a lot of thanks, but she's really the, she's really the one that makes the needle move. So truly appreciate you, and again, everybody who has a part of what we do and our success. But one thing I want to say, and I thought about this about two weeks ago, and I was waiting for an opportunity to share with each and every one of you guys, and I'm talking about, I'm talking to my team right now, people, we talk about community restoration, right? We talk about shining light in the community, you know, when you hear Westinghouse, mainly on the news, everything is negative, right? Talking about the Homewood community, Wilkinsburg community, but we've been able to do something extremely special. And I will say, you guys, every single day, every good decision that you make, right, getting up in the morning, getting to school, not leaving the school till nine o'clock at night, the sacrifice and commitment that you guys make is touching the deepest, darkest corners of our communities. You got people who haven't smiled in years, being able to say, I'm proud of the group that is bringing pride back to our neighborhood, and not just Homewood. Talking Wilkinsburg, Garfield, Lincoln, Larmour, and we're doing something that people thought that we couldn't do. When the, when the Wilkinsburg and Pittsburgh merger, the Wilkinsburg and PPS merger happened, they thought it was gonna be completely chaos, but you guys were catalysts to make sure that that was a smooth transition. So I just want to say that I appreciate you guys beyond playing football, beyond what you do on the football field, even beyond what you do in the classroom. You know, I think, I'm thankful for what you guys do in the community, because part of my mission and part of my, my life's work i- is making sure that I'm helping restore our community, and that's through coaching at Westinghouse and even working at the Trade Institute of Pittsburgh. So I just want to thank you guys, keep you guys encouraged, and know that it's much bigger than what we see on the field. It's much bigger than winning football games. It's really bringing pride back to a community that has been forgotten for years. So truly thank you guys, and keep up the good work, we still got work to do. And to say a few things, I would like to bring up Rodrick Jeter, who is our team captain, just to say a few words.
How y'all guys doing? I just want to thank everybody for all of this stuff, winning the state, the city champion, and all that, just ready to get back to work, make the city proud.
So now therefore be it resolved that I, Ed Ganey, Mayor of the city of Pittsburgh, makes today Westinghouse Bulldog Day in our most livable city. May God continue to bless the city, and may God continue to bless you. Let's give it up.
I want to read our proxim.
Oh, they got it.
They got yours.
I want them to give testimonies.
Okay. And then I'm just gonna say, we have a proclamation here, and Reverend Burgess, do you want to come up and read this one? We're gonna let Reverend read this proclamation, but I just want to say, we are gonna be here for you, we're so proud of you for everything you're doing on the field, but we are here for you even when you're off the field. So if you ever need anything from Pittsburgh City Council or Mayor Ganey, I can tell you, I know that Karen Arnold, Rod Netchi, Dr. Sacco, Dr. Sacco, they all know how to get in touch with us. But there are a lot of people here that can reach out to us, so make sure that if you ever need something, and I can tell you Reverend Burgess has been hoarding a lot of money for your district, so, so if you need something, make sure you talk to these guys about getting it.
Just do the end.
Go ahead, you do.
We'll skip the whereas clauses, because they're the same in both. But now therefore be resolved that Council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend head coach Dante Green, his coaching staff, and the 2022, 2023 Westinghouse Academy Bulldogs for their undefeated season and their city league championship. And be it further resolved that the Council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, November 2nd, 2022 to be Westinghouse Academy Bulldogs Football Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Can I have a motion and a second? Second. All in favor? Proclamation approved. And we're gonna give these to the mayor, because the mayor can, I don't know who the, okay, oh, sorry, I didn't even see you.
Hey, y'all, thank you. Thank you so much. Man, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for all you do. You have a great example here, so try to, try to follow his lead in some of the great things he's doing. Thank you, everyone. Congratulations. Thank you for making Pittsburgh proud. Thank you.
Can you all stay, can you all stay up front so we can get a picture, please?
Director Walker, did you want to say anything?
No.
First, I want, yes, first try to get this, special picture.
Okay. Council members, come forward for the photo, please. Kim, where'd you go to school?
Westinghouse.
Madam Clerk, our clerk went to Westinghouse and came right here. You did too, Chris. Come on up for the photo.
Chris is a Bulldog.
Come on up for the photo, please.
Yes, sir.
93.
93.
The kids are laughing at that date.
Everybody right here, count to three, say Bulldogs. One, two, three.
Bulldogs.
You guys play for us.
We do.
We play.
Just no rich.
Right here.
Couple sitting.
Best high school in the city.
Yes, sir. Bulldogs. Westinghouse. 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 She said the money flies. Yes, sir. No doubt. Nothing to think about.
Thank you for your performance. You know, I used to coach the little children, so I, I love it to the story, I appreciate you. I didn't always have children, like a world-class team, but I think you're following. And let me thank our IMP department for switching cameras so quickly and mic. I wish there was still a line.
Chris, get that picture. You get that picture.
Come on, let me get that too, let me get that too.
I got it, I got it.
Thanks, Dr. Sacco. Thank you. So good seeing you.
Oh, he's crazy.
Jeffrey Wooder.
Yeah, thank you, Jeffrey Wooder. He's run for office a couple of different towns.
See you, Dr. Sacco. Nina.
Was she in charge of?
She's like, um, super incredible. Hey, she used to be principal at my kids' school. What's Nina's new title?
Who?
Nina.
Sacco.
Assistant Superintendent, maybe high schools?
Yeah, it's high schools. She used to be the principal at my kids' school.
So thank you, Madam President, for working with the mayor to acknowledge the wonderful students of Westinghouse.
Thank you all for the time.
With that, we will return to our agenda, if everyone is okay, given that it was still open on the table, before we can finish out Public Safety Services Committee by going back to Bill 629.
So can I begin the conversation? And so I'm not unwilling to work, but let me at least now lay out the thinking process so we have a platform to work on, since over the last, for whatever reason, over the last six weeks, we've not been able to, to, to get anything in writing. So we know that there is a need to rebuild and to strengthen at least 50% of Pittsburgh, right? We know 50% of Pittsburgh is actually doing pretty well, but approximately 50% of Pittsburgh is not doing so well. And in those areas primarily, you have the violence and the hopelessness, even though the violence has occurred in other communities, the people who are doing those violence are not from those communities. They are still from that 50% of the city that is not doing well. And so at the conference that we came to, came from last week, Cities United, Cities United, when it talks about rebuilding communities, it talks about it through a public safety lens. It explains the notion of public safety, and it says that public safety, and I'm reading from, from their, 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 their stuff, the definition, Cities United, reimagining public safety means identifying community-led strategies and/or supportive solutions and strategies that stop the bleeding today and investing in the dismantlement of the systems of inequity. And so you got to do both. You have to do immediate things, but at the same time, you have to invest in long-term things, right? I want to cover, I will not talk, we're gonna talk about this at length Monday, but I want to at least show you how all these things fit together. So we have something called the Pittsburgh Plan for Peace, and the Pittsburgh Plan for Peace is a city violence reduction initiative, all right? It is managed by the Department of Safety, Lee Smith is Director of Public Safety, it is staffed by David Jones, who is the Assistant Director for Community Affairs. It's governed through the Stop the Violence Governing Board. The Stop the Government, Stop the Violence Governing Board consists of Councilman Lovell, myself, the mayor's office, the public safety office, the police, it's a, it's a, it's a representative group from various parts of city government. So you have this sort of overarching group that manages this initiative. This initiative is citywide, and not only does it, does it manage city government, but it manages all the community organizations and partners who partner with us. It has six comprehensive coordinated strategies. One, it has a public health approach that's managed by the Safer Together Coordinator. People don't, people have asked what that means. Public Health Approach means a four-step process. One, you define and monitor the problem. Two, you identify the risk factors and the protective factors. Three, you develop and test prevention strategies. And then four, you assure widespread adoption. So that's the overall thinking of how it works, how it's implemented. There are six coordinated and comprehend, coordinated and comprehensive strategies. The strategies are coordinated, that's the, that's what makes the initiative special, is it represents the whole city, but each of the six things are coordinated, so it works together. And on Monday, we'll talk about this at length, I'm just gonna scan it, over it very quickly, I won't even discuss it. One, you have the Public Health Approach, which is managed by the Safer Together Coordinator. Two, you have the Right Policing, and that's managed by the Pittsburgh Borough Police. Three, you have Person-Centered Support, that means you have social workers and all that stuff, that's managed by the Office of Community Health and Safety. You have Community Partners, which is managed by the Office of Violence Prevention and Community Services. And then you have five, you have a Healthy Economy, which is managed by Jake Pollak, the Director of OMB. And then, you have five, you have a Healthy Economy, which is managed by Jake Pollak, the Director of OMB. And finally, you have Data and Evidence. This is overall managed by Jake Wheatley, the Chief of Staff. So, you have now this, this initiative that really oversees a process, right? Of, so you have these areas where you have these, now, all of them are connected to the community. In healthy communities, and, and again, the example I give is just, you know, is when Patrick was in office, is when we, we did a joint Bloomfield, Garfield strategy for the Bottom Dollar, which is now the Aldi's, right? And we sat down in a community meeting, we had members of Garfield, and I thought it was going to be a community meeting like I had in my past, right? Where we would talk, we'd bring in city resources. It wasn't like that at all. When I went there, the Bloomfield residents had their own architects who lived there. They had their own management people who lived there. They drew their own specs. When we had negotiated the building, they brought their own resources and said, "This is how high the building is, has to be." I'd never seen anything like that before, because in my community, those, that talent doesn't exist. There's not those resources that are inherent in the community. They, they didn't, they didn't need the city to negotiate. Really, I was really more just a witness of watching the community with all those resources engage in a very comprehensive way. In poorer communities, those resources don't exist. So, I want to talk about, and I guess, I think I want to separate the staff from the function. If we can agree on the function, then we can have the right staff, because, well, you know, we, we actually have a vacancy in the office. I won't go over this at length. But basically, the Pittsburgh Strong Communities Initiative, the, the Plan for Peace is from the top down. It shows you how the city is functioning, how all of the city places are functioning. But for some of our communities, there has to be a bottom-up to prepare the residents and the community groups to participate. We all agree that it takes a whole village. It's going, in order to reduce violence, we agree that everybody has to play a part. But someone is going to have to teach the community groups and the residents how they play their part. Someone has to teach them that. They don't know. And if we don't teach them, and right now, there is no one assigned to do it. And so, it's, it's, you know, there, we have a few groups that are functioning, a few groups that are not. There is no one whose job it is, is to hook the community up into these various strategies. That's what the Strong Communities Initiative does. Again, here's a PowerPoint. I will not go over the PowerPoint. It's based around the social determinants of health. Basically, what it says is that if you want to have, in my community, there's a corner where four communities touch. On the corner of Penn Avenue and Fifth Avenue, I just inherit part of that district, right? I have four communities that touch. North Point Breeze, South Point Breeze, Shady Side, and Lormer. If you walk from Lormer to either one of those corners, it's what, sixty feet? Sixty feet. In South Point Breeze, you have the highest life expectancy in Allegheny County, one of the highest life expectancy. Shady Side, one of the highest life expectancy in Allegheny County. If you cross the street in sixty feet, you go to one of the lowest life expectancy in Allegheny County. By simply moving your house up sixty feet theoretically, you lose fifteen years of your life. Because the outcomes in Lormer are about fifteen years of life less than the outcomes in Shady Side and the outcomes in North Point Breeze. I've spent fifteen years doing this work, right? And we have, and evidence of this is the mayor's office just awarded, I think, forty-five grants totaling a million dollars to community-based organizations. We had a hundred and ten grants that were submitted. I had the ability to read over the grants. Forty of those grants were incomprehensible. They weren't written well. They were cutting pace from the internet. They were incomprehensible in terms of a logic model or any of us who write grants. And so, certainly, there's a disconnect between individual residents. Every week, for me, I don't know about your offices, every week in my office, someone calls me, says, "Rev, I want to start a business." Every week. Every week, someone calls me and says, "Rev, I want to start up the school program." I go and talk to them. They don't have the capacity. They, some of them are doing work. They're doing good work. They just don't know how to put it on paper. They don't know how to design it. I can't take time from my council office to sit down and give them the technical assistance that they need. Second of all, so, and again, I'm trying to talk about my past work, but for five or six years, the agency that I, before I became a member of council, the agency that I was over was the Technical Assistant Agency for Emerging Organizations in Allegheny County. I helped start two-hundred-and-thirty nonprofit organizations in Allegheny County, providing them with all of the technical resources from board development to fiscal structure to program development. I kind of do know this stuff. Now, these agencies and these groups don't need traditional, they need it. They're not ready for traditional technical assistance. Because the way traditional technical assistance works is you put them in a cohort. You sit them down with sixty people and say, "Okay, we're going to go over the basics of how to do a business plan. We're going to go over the basics of, of what it looks like to be a nonprofit development person." I know how to do that stuff. Did that for years. They will leave that meeting the same way they came in, because they're not ready for that yet. They actually need pre-technical assistance. They need someone to sit down with them to explain to them the very basics of how you interact with government, the very basics of how you approach a foundation, how you put together a program. And they need someone to sit with them in a room for days, not one time, not two times. They need someone to sit down with them for days and/or weeks or months to walk with them, to continually give them feedback. Now, this skill is not rocket scientists, not rocket scientists. If you are a remotely intelligent person, we can take you through a program to teach you to deliver these TA services, all right? We have two of the, we have, right now, we have, we have a space open for another coordinator. We have three coordinators. Two of them have earned doctorates. Certainly, they have both, one of them for sure, maybe two of them, one of them has done technical assistance in the past. They can be trained because they have the academic background. We can take them through a curriculum. It's not something unbelievable. You can teach them to do this work. The Strong Community Initiative says basically this, and maybe I'm wrong. Every community deserves safe, safety, every community deserves housing, every community deserves access to healthcare, every community deserves quality education, every community deserves income. The idea is not to just target any community. It's to go to every community and say, "Let's look at what you have." And let's look at where you, where you, like, let's go to Carrick. Let's look at what Carrick has, and then, let's look at what the Carrick doesn't have, and let's work with the community groups in Carrick and give them the capacity to build out their, their capacity to do whatever they want to do. So, if they want to do an education, education program, we share models with them. If they want to do a family support program, they want to start a new business, now, we can argue whether or not the staff we have can be trained to do this. That there is no, if, there is no other, there is no other entity in the city doing this. No one else is doing this. We've, we talked to the mayor's office. We've all agreed, which is why they helped me write this. We all agreed this work has to be done. Now, I don't know about you. This is just me now. This, the last thing, I'm going to talk to me as a councilperson. These people will be helping to organize residents and community groups inside council districts. My preference, as a council member, I would prefer to have some control over the people who are organizing residents and community groups in my own district. I would rather it not be done by the mayor's office. I'd rather be participatory. Not that the mayor's office is bad, but council has its own role. And I would prefer Councilman Coghill to be a participant in the organizing of residents and community groups and empowering them in his own community. I think Councilman Lovell. And by having our own staff that does that, we then, as council, can kind of oversee the development of these groups in our own council district. I am certainly willing to hold it. I am willing, I have been. I've held it, what, six weeks now? Eight weeks, right? And, and I'm willing to talk. I'm willing to negotiate. But I'm, I want to at least explain how all this fits in an, in an ecosystem of stopping violence and rebuilding communities. And so, that's why I afford it. I think the group, the, the workers will do the work with or without the legislation. And I think the council, and lastly, I also think the council people should be able to say no, right? You may not need this. You know, there are certain communities that absolutely don't need the helping hand. They have enough resources in their own communities every day, all day long. You know, when, when Bill Paduto and I, we served together on council, he used to say this. You know, we, we used to laugh about it privately. He said, "You know, I can go to sleep for eight years, and when I wake up, my council district will be much better than it is right now." If I don't do anything because of the wealth and the resources in those districts, it's concentrated, but it's very, very wealthy, right? And it's very, very resourced, right? And they, you know, they have their own way of dealing with government and getting state resources and getting government resources. They know how to do it without city government. Certainly, Erica does a great job. I'm not saying that you don't, but I'm saying that, that they have those capacities. In some of our districts, in my district, they don't have that capacity, right? I have hundreds of nonprofit organizations, almost all, very few of them, to not, maybe ten percent of them have resources, have buildings, have programs. The rest of them are just struggling, and they do things backwards. Lastly, last example. There's a guy in my district who, I know his family. He spent somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars of his own money to build a community center. He spent about a hundred thousand of his own money. He bought a building, put a hundred thousand dollars into building the community center. No one had given him technical assistance. No one helped him think about this. Had someone helped him to think about it, what we could have done is said, "Look, man, if you want to buy this building, that's great. Don't put your money into rehabbing it yet. Let's run programming. Let's get your capacity for grant writing and programming up, so that you have programming already. So, then, when you open up the building, you already have income from the programming. You already have the kids to put in." But no one taught him. So, he's sitting on a brand-new building that he's paying rent, gas, mortgage, all that stuff for, and no programs, and every month, he goes deeper in debt, because he didn't have anyone to at least teach him the basics of how you put together a program, how you design a building, what you need before you put the building in. And now, again, I'm willing to hold and talk, but this is my thinking. My thinking may be flawed. I'm willing to share and talk and, 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 and share, and, and amend and revise, but what I am suggesting is, if we're going to do this, let's talk about, I, I have not yet, I, I've been waiting for eight weeks. I have not heard, I have not seen anything in writing. I've asked for, I sent an email recently. I've not seen anything in writing. I've not seen any amendments, and so, I really don't understand. I, I don't understand, I don't under, I don't know how to make this better. I did the best I can. Jake Pollak and I wrote the best we can. And so, without tangible alternatives, I have nothing, there's no more work for me to do. But I'm willing to hold. I'm willing to do the work. Just tell me what you want to see different, and I'll help do that. I'm willing to hold for two weeks, four weeks, doesn't matter, because irregardless of this, I'm going to do this work. I'm absolutely going to do, I've been doing this work before this. I'm not going to stop, because the need is so great, because these kids are out of control. And we know the only way to stop this is the whole community participates. And we need these community groups to be able to operate in a high-functioning level to do their part. That's my thought. I'll hold. Whatever council's will is, I'm with you.
All right, thank you. I've got Madam President, followed by Councilman Coghill, and I now see Councilman Kraus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So, I just, I want to first say, I know how passionate you are about this. I know how passionate Councilman Lovell is. I know we all are. I know we've done a lot. For me, my hesitation is, we have seen, since I've been here, we've seen the Pittsburgh Initiative to Reduce Crime. It sounded great. We've seen Safer Together. That sounds great. We've seen so many programs come and go. We've seen the Stop the Violence Program. Everything sounds great, but we're seeing increased numbers of shootings and violence. And at this point, I think the community has grown weary, we're growing weary. We want to be supportive and we want to help, but we're tired of hearing about programs. We're tired of hearing about funding. I really think that, you know, the way to get some, to a lot of people are not going to be through meetings. They're not going to be through community organization. And honestly, I mean, I, no, I don't want people coming to my area and organizing, but they already have. You already have. And, you know, there's been people that've come in, and you're, and you're right. It's caused nothing but divisiveness in my community. So, you know, I'm going to be cautious when I vote for anything like this. And, and I do want people to have resources. I don't know that council is the one who's supposed to be helping organizations. I mean, we have, we do have a contract with the Bear Center for Nonprofit Management to do some of that stuff. And so, but having said all that, I'm not opposed to anything. I really just want to hear a little bit more. I want to read a little bit more, and, and I want to have a discussion. And I really want us to go out into the communities together with resources for the, for the residents. I think at this point, nobody wants to hear from us. They don't want to hear about another program. They don't want to hear about another dollar. I mean, well, some people want to hear if it's coming to them, but I think what people are really tired of in the city is they want resources to come to them, and they want to know how to get the help. We have a ton of help in the city of Pittsburgh. In Allegheny County, there's help all over. But nobody knows how to access it, because it is navigating that massive, you know, amount of, of help that is out there. And when you call 211, that's one of the things we should be looking at. We have a partnership with 211 in Allegheny County and the, and the, I can't remember the name of, who is it? Yeah, United Way. And we have people that call there, and they'll call us and say, "It was no help. It's no help." Because I think they're overloaded with the, the calls that they're getting, and maybe they're not staffed appropriately or trained proper, properly. I don't know what the issue is, but that's something we need to look at. Because if that is really a resource, it's not really serving as a resource to a lot of residents that are calling us. They may have a number that they've, you know, helped this many people or that many people, but the bottom line is, I can tell you how many people called my office and said it was not helpful. So, I think it's helping people navigate all that, and I think sometimes it's just taking people right to the people that have that kind of capacity and that kind of help, taking social workers. I, I don't know why the social workers are still not out and, from the mayor's office into the community. I don't know what the, that holdup is, but, and I know they've given us some feedback and some updates on it, but I can't recall. We've had so much information over the violence stuff over this past few months. So, I just want the public to know, city council is trying a lot of ways to try to address this, in ways that are under our jurisdiction and things, even beyond. So, I, I just think that it's finding the right thing, and, and if they have some ideas, if they have some ways to, you know, things they'd like to see, resources that people need, contact us. Let us know what it is. We could be doing differently. And, you know, I think some of it, I think we're open to some of that. But Reverend, I do, I do want to say, I just, I'm not opposed. I'm just not in favor yet until, until I know a little bit more about how it affects the community and how it's different from any other program that we've done over the past ten years. And what results, are we actually going to get results this time? That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to congratulate you and the Westinghouse Bulldogs. You know, you know, and honestly, you know, a team like that is probably better for reducing violence and what they achieved this year, and the pride, you could just see it in their faces.
Reverend's going to give them money.
All right. So, so, and I had to remind a lot of the Bulldogs that were here, you know, that I was part of a city championship football team in nineteen eighty-two, and I also had to remind them that we beat Westinghouse. We did, yeah, yeah. But at the time, we called them the Puppy Dogs, not the Bulldogs. I thought I had to be escorted out of here, and I'm a little worried about Councilman Wilson. I haven't seen him since the Bulldogs took out of here, so.
He had an emergency.
No, no, really, it's a, you know, true accomplishment, and to this day, I can name every teammate I have, I've had. Good bit of them were from Councilman Lovell's district and the Hill District. I still keep in contact with many of them today, so congratulations to them. I hope they do well and represent us well in the states, and looking forward to watching them. But right back to the, you know, the, the community initiative, the four new Harrys that we have. Are you trying to just really more define what they do? Because I will tell you this. I've been slow in figuring out how to use them for, for me. But even recently, I've, I've hit my stride with a couple of them, and they've been very, very helpful, and I intend to use them for things that I need. But in redefining this, I don't necessarily want them to be pulled away from the role that they serve now with me, so I don't know if you're redefining them. Yeah, please.
I don't think I'm redefining, I'm clarifying. The, the
I don't think I'm redefining, I'm clarifying. The, the public engagement specialists were always supposed to engage the public. I've not changed their role. They're supposed to engage the public. They have two ways in which they do their role. One way is council facing. They provide capacity for council, and I talked, I think, to almost all the council people when we create these positions, say, okay, what do you think you would need, right? And we talked about someone who could facilitate community means. Erica and I talked about, uh, Councilwoman Lavelle talked about, you know, someone who can, who can engage community. So we talked about that. So it's on the counter, council facing, press releases, um, communication strategy, all that stuff. So that's half of their job. The other half of their job is community facing, right? They're supposed to engage the public. Well, all I'm doing is saying, as they engage the public, here are some takeaways that they could do. They're not forced to do it, obviously, but we can give them the capacity that while they're engaging the public, this is the way they engage the public, by providing ongoing conversation, interfacing us and government, and providing them this technical assistance. So it's not, I'm not redefining them, I don't think. I think I'm clarifying a role they could play. Do I need this? And let me be very clear. I don't need the legislation for them to do this work. They can go do this work tomorrow. I do think what the legislation does, hopefully, was put, I was hoping, council together to think of this as initiative citywide that we all participate in, right? So, so, and that they have these skills, so that both they know that's their skill, so that, and I do think, and I do believe, and Councilwoman Gross may actually want to be part of the training. I do think they're going to need ongoing training, right? We are, we have another role we could hire. We have another staff person who left, um, and so we could actually hire a new person who has those skills. We could, the training won't be that difficult. We've done some, we do some more. But anyway, the long, the short question is, I'm redef, I'm not changing their role, I don't think. I'm just clarifying their role.
Yeah, yep.
That's my intent.
And, you know, I'm not opposed to what you're doing. Um, again, I just like to utilize them in my own way. I don't want them to be taken back from what they're doing for me. I, I do tend to agree with Council President Kail Smith when we do develop these groups and, you know, define different, you know, cat, define them in different categories. You know, so many, I've seen so many committees and things have come across this table where really not too much has happened, um, which, you know, I don't, I'm not directing blame at anybody as to why that is, but I think it's kind of just the nature of it. So, um, yeah, I, I will, uh, further talk with you about it, but, uh, I'm not opposed to what you're doing, and if, um, if it helps them, if it helps define what they're doing better, and if you could utilize them in your neighborhood for those reasons, um, I could probably come to terms with it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I was really hoping to get in earlier on this conversation because I think we're very close to crossing a line. We, we are discussing matters of personnel and speaking about people and their livelihood as though they are interchangeable objects. I really think this is a much more appropriate conversation, being it is a matter of personnel to go into executive session. Uh, and if I, I can get the support of members, I would call, not this moment in time, but I really do believe since there's, there's, there is so much confusion, might be the strong, strong word, around the, the purpose, the intent, and the job description of, of the positions that, that it, it really deserves to go into executive session.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
So how long do you want to hold?
Well, I, I just want to say one thing, and then we'll certainly entertain your motion to hold. Um, and that's regarding, Madam President, you mentioned sort of initiatives that work. Um, and maybe we'll go into this on Monday at the post agenda, but I think it's worth pointing out, the group violence intervention program was working. We saw consecutive years of reduced gun violence in our city. There were, I think, I think it was four years in a row. The year prior, what was that? Pandemic hit was 19, so 18, we saw an all-time low. The program was working, and it was working on a shoestring budget, right? We've now fully funded it. However, as it was working, we went into a pandemic. Everyone was at home, including the workers who were doing the violence intervention. Unfortunately, once you have teens stuck at home, you, a number of factors contributed to a nationwide problem that has sparked across our cities regarding violence. And we have, we have also not been immune to that. We've been affected by it. But at the same time, our workers are now back out. We have, as Reverend outlined, the various program initiatives in place, and so I think that you're now going to see our numbers to begin going back down. So much so that Reverend Burgess and I were at a, a retreat this past weekend, um, the Pittsburgh Black Collective. It was about 100 of us, I don't know, of black leaders from across the city meeting to discuss how to improve Black Pittsburgh. I was in the Public Safety Committee. Coming out of that committee, we all had to come up with two outcomes that we wanted to see. As we talked about the group violence intervention work, the Plan for Peace, and the model that was in place, our goal was, because we believe strongly enough in it, that we would reduce gun homicides by 25% in one year, is because of how much we believe in what we're actually doing. So I just wanted to put that on the table to say it was working, and then the pandemic hit. We're back at doing the work, and we're actually now funding it, where prior to that, it was on a shoestring budget, where now we're actually fully funding it. They've actually hired workers for, to go out across the entire city. So, and we'll go into it more in money, but I just didn't want to...
I just want to also add, we also had the highest number of police officers we've had in a long time during those years, too. So I don't know what is really the cause of all of it. Maybe, I, maybe it's a combination, but I'd like to know exactly that that's what caused it.
So, I just want to put that one little piece on the table. Uh, Reverend Burgess?
What, what, two, three, which that will the council, so before I make the motion, Ms. Gross, about how long would you lead? Mr. Kraus, what's, Madam President, how long? Two, three? How long, how many weeks do you want me to make the motion?
Three weeks, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, Matt.
Sure.
Three weeks takes us right into the Thanksgiving holiday week, which is a double date, it's on Monday. Um, I would suggest perhaps to the 29th, which would be the following Tuesday.
That's correct.
Or the 30th, forgive me, on November, which would be the following Wednesday. So that would be a one, two, three, four-week hold.
Motion to hold four weeks.
Thank you. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill be held for four weeks. That now takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee, chaired by Councilman Wilson. Uh, our first deferred paper is Bill 270.
Bill 270, ordinance supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VII Business Licensing, Article VII, Business Licenses by creating a new chapter 768 Short Term Rentals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
But discussion.
Discussion, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
You're right. I know you...
Thank you, Councilwoman. No, I, actually, I think we're supposed to hold it correct for weeks. We're going to make a motion to hold it for four weeks, but I do want to thank Councilman Wilson and his office for doing a tremendous amount of work on this, um, and our solicitor, our city council solicitor and the law department upstairs. All work into together, but, so a motion to hold for four weeks.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held four weeks. That takes us to Bill 465.
Bill 465, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title V Traffic, Article VII, Parking Chapter 549, Residential Parking Permit Program 549.08 Visitor Permits, Non-Resident Permits, so as to relate the issuance of residential parking permits for short-term rentals to the issuance of licenses by the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections, authorizing the operation of short-term rentals in the city of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Wilson's not here.
I know it was the wish of, um, Councilman Wilson to hold both of these bills for four weeks. So all motion to hold for four weeks.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill will be held four weeks. That takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Gross. Uh, first deferred paper is Bill 641.
Bill 641, Resolution of the City of Pittsburgh Adopting an Amendment to the Still Valley Authority's Articles of Incorporation to Decrease the Number of Members of the Board of Directors of the Authority.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion.
Second.
Uh, we've been, I, I did get emails with some suggested amendment language, but I don't have it, um, ready for today. Councilwoman Smith, I'll defer to you.
Yeah, no, I just, I don't know. I didn't know if the solicitor had anything to say. Just briefly, um, do we need to hold, or did you, is it all okay?
Yeah, I mean, Councilwoman Gross...
Yeah, I didn't know that part. I didn't hear that part.
Yeah, so they sent a proposed amendment language over, but to my knowledge, nobody has signed it, so I don't know what to tell you.
Could you work with Zeke?
I would prefer to, um, share it with you, Councilwoman.
Okay.
And we could talk about it after today's meeting, so we could hold this for maybe two weeks and hopefully bring it to resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill be held two weeks. Um, that takes us to Bill 843.
Bill 843, Resolution Authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interests, if any, and Into the Publicly, Following Publicly Owned Properties in a Fifteenth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh Designated in the Dean Registry Office of Allegheny County is Block 56F, Lot 176, located at 201 Glen Collage Street, Council District Five.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion.
Second.
Second.
I just wanted to give, uh, Councilwoman Smith, uh, any opportunity, since this is in District Five, which is, she's having to handle the, the call, since we don't have a council person.
And I would just say that I spoke to some people over there, um, and they're okay with it, so.
Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for holding for a week.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our last bill, Bill 866.
Bill 866, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 532 Lincoln Avenue.
Motion to approve. Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That does, that exhausts our agenda for today. We do have meeting announcements. Tomorrow, Thursday, November 3rd at 11:00 a.m., council will hold another briefing for the members of, for members on the mayor's preliminary 2023 budget. Next week, due to the general elections, council will hold our regular meeting of council on Monday, November 7th at 10:00 a.m. The standing committees meeting will be on Wednesday, November 9th at 10:00 a.m. To register to speak at these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Also, on Monday, November 7th at 1:30 p.m., council will hold a cablecast post agenda on the Pittsburgh Plan for Peace and Group Violence Initiative. And on Wednesday, November 9th at 1:30, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 747 and 754 relative to the Carnegie Mellon University Institutional Master Plan. Is there anything from members? Councilwoman Gross?
Yes, I would like to, a motion to hold an, an update for council, for a post agenda on childcare funding and programs. We haven't talked about it for a while at council, but before COVID, we moved several packages of money, a $2 million allocation that we saw, uh, if you'll recall, we did the cooperative agreement, um, twice, I think, and we have, um, haven't had an update since COVID happened. And then secondly, right before COVID also in December of 2019, you might remember, I had a budget amendment to move $250,000 to the URA for childcare microlending. Um, and then in the course of the pandemic, we entered the pandemic, and PNC wanted to give the URA funding for small businesses, and because PNC also has a particular interest in childcare and early childhood, they allocated $1.5 million specifically for childcare, um, support at the URA. So that's 1.75 million, um, that has moved in the last two years, and 2 million that council allocated directly. Um, and so hopefully we'll get a great update.
Second.
It was a motion for post agenda.
And seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Work with the clerk's office. Madam President?
I just want to thank you for bringing that back up. It was the Women's Caucus who initially moved that funding, and it seemed like it was so long ago that we first did it. But, were you not here? But you did the following year, you got involved with it, right? Yeah, I can't remember. But anyway, I just want to say, it's such a big issue in, in the city of Pittsburgh right now. I wish we would work with the school district to open up some quality after-school programs, and they do have the, uh, they do an amazing job with early childhood education. I wish that they would open more facilities, um, across...
And they start at three for head start, but we even have pressure, you know, we know that moms are leaving the workforce. We know that our poorest households are really struggling, even in the zero to three, right? So even if you've got an infinite home, as many of us know, it's really tough to find any place.
Yeah, but even us, we have facilities across the city of Pittsburgh. We should be looking to see what we can do to put some quality programming. I'm just going to say because that's part of what's wrong with our kids. Some of our kids aren't in quality programming, and so, I mean, it'd be one, just another, another effort in that, in that area. And some do an amazing job. I do want to say that, too.
Reverend Burgess?
So I will say this publicly. Um, I saw them too, as superintendent, we've been doing other things. The council passed legislation to create a city school board partnership. We have Ms. Gross, we have Teresa, who, myself, who have these ideas around education. We have city facilities. We have city resources that are not integrated with the public schools. Um, in fact, in my, in the same, uh, retreat that, uh, Councilwoman Lavelle talked about, one of the sub-conversations of our group was how frustrating it was for them to partner with the public schools, how difficult it was for them to get access to the schools, to, to the principals, and so I believe that it's really important that the city, not just, and I think the mayor and the superintendent have a great relationship, but I think the mayor by himself is not the city of Pittsburgh. I think that you need all of its elected officials. I think you need to merge us in a, a communicative way so that we're working really close together. There's no reason why a young person who leaves Westinghouse and goes to one of our rec centers doesn't have the support at the rec center that's, that's, that also has communicated with his school needs, right? And we can, we, this has been done across the country. California has led this model of school-city partnerships, and so I'm going to talk to superintendent, uh, directly about implementing the partnership. I think the, the, the pre, the early childhood initiative stuff, I think, you know, Teresa spent her life with, a lot, part of her life with parent engagement and parental support. We know, we, we, we talk about, it takes a whole community. Well, we have to model what a community looks like. And if we can't do it, i-if we, the people responsible for their, for the families together, you know, they have them nine to three, we have them three to nine, and all day Saturday, all day Sunday, right? They're in our parks, they're in our, in our police department, our fire department, our, our, our public works. And so I will now start to publicly suggest that we form this partnership, and we start working on these mutual issues of agreement. Um, and so that's, that's, that's my, that's my soapbox again. I say I'm going to have a soapbox today, but I will, I, I talked to superintendent today. I'm going to schedule a meeting with him, and I'm going to, um, I've already talked, of course, to, um, the school board, and I, I think it's, it's important that we now come together for the good of these kids.
Mr. Chair? May I?
Gross?
Thank you, thank you. So I am looking at the notes from, um, the meeting that Councilwoman Smith, uh, President Smith, after she created that task force that we were on, that we had on July 16th at PPS with the superintendent, um, with their solicitor, with their intergovernmental affairs, uh, with, um, Chief Wheatley from the mayor's office. The mayor was detained on the road from Harrisburg where he was lobbying on our behalf for resources for the city. Um, and Councilwoman Smith led us into a discussion about how we share resources and create that partnership. So I appreciate the goodwill, but the work has already been started by our council president, and we talked about how, um, we would work together on workforce initiatives. We've already seen the results from that. The mayor has had wonderful, um, uh, press conference a month or so ago about collaborating with PPS on workforce initiatives, and so we'll be working with, um, high school residents, uh, uh, and internships there in, in the city government. Um, our, our PPS board member and the intergovernmental affairs director for PPS, Devin Taliaferro, worked, um, talked about how we should combine issues on kind of data and assessment, because we do our own data and studies across neighborhoods. PPS, um, doesn't really share with us, um, what their data and analytics say about city... data and analytics say about city kids and where they live. And we talked about those issues. Councilwoman Smith, I'm sorry, I've got the notes in front of me, Councilwoman, so if you don't mind, talked about how we should do exactly what you're now talking about, but we were talking about it in July, creating a discussion about where there are safe places, I think is the vocabulary that used at the time in my notes. Forest facilities, whether they're city facilities, PPS facilities, and where are the gaps? And where can we fill those in with programming? I suggested kind of on that line that we do an inventory of, we already have inventoried the kind of physical, like, conditions and deferred maintenance of our facilities, but we could layer on top of that city facilities, whether it's a dugout at a baseball field, or it's an empty rec center, or it's football fields, all of the kinds of facilities that we track under DPW, and look and see where we have those assets that are perhaps closed assets or that need to be restored. But we don't layer, we haven't yet layered it over top of the school district's assets. And it doesn't stop with just rec centers, right? There are certified county health kitchens at some places and not others. There are swimming pools at some places and not others. We talked about that. And, and then my notes kind of cut off because this is a photo of my handwritten notes, so I've got them back in my office. But we, rectangular fields is a big one that we were just talking about recently with Dynamo Soccer, right? The school district actually has some fields where we don't. And so if we at least could compare where there are gaps that the community is lacking in resources, and then compare both these two basically co-equal budgetarily sized bodies of government, it's, we can at least certainly bring resources where they're lacking and, and possibly even eliminate inefficiencies, right? If we, if we were able to work together in that way. So we're looking forward to continuing that conversation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I, I want to say that I think that we've been talking about, you know, all of us coming together. So let's do that. Let's schedule something. But not only just with the school district, maybe we should have a meeting with our county council, and if not all of them, at least their leadership, and maybe Rich Fitzgerald, the county exec, Rich Fitzgerald, the mayor, you know, his, his, his top staff members, and with some of our state leadership, and, and just try to figure out what's best for the city of Pittsburgh and how we can all work together a little bit better. Maybe we schedule that, like, not a, I don't know if we want to do a public meeting or not, but I'll work with council members on that. And, and if you're, I know you're going to do what you do, so.
I'll work with you.
So, I know you're going to do what you do. But I'm happy to do, and I'll continue to do what I do for council as a body. That's it.
If nothing else, motion to.
Just, just real quickly, you know, regardless of who gets us into the schools and talking to kids, you know, I don't care how we get there, but I firmly believe that if we're going to change the culture of violence, we really need to be into the schools with the resources that the city can bring to the table. So, so I will support any which way we can get in and deal with the school district and.
Me, too.
School board and the kids. I'm for it, no matter how we get there. It's vital to the future of the city, I believe. So, thanks.
I am, too. And I think we all are.
Yeah.
Parker's going to get Deborah to step back in. We don't have a call.
And Bruce gone.
Yeah, Bruce locked off.
Oh, I, he was just calling me. I didn't know. He was just calling. I didn't know why. Okay, I can sing. I wonder if he didn't log off intentionally.
Yeah. Yes. We, we, we can, we can.
Oh, really?
Motion, motion to.
Is that, wait, wait, wait. Does the solicitor say that?
Yeah, he'll, he'll tell us.
We can't approve the minutes, though.
No.
So we can adjourn, but.
I, I mean, unless, unless you're not going to get a quorum here, I would recommend just waiting.
Yeah, because we can't do that portion of it.
Right.
Can we get Bruce online, on phone, on the phone?
In his own.
She went to go grab Deb. Right. No, when did, no.
Shaw's the show we got, too.
Yeah. Thank you. Now, motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Come here.
We are adjourned.
All in favor.
All in favor, aye. Thank you.